And or off and join me in a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. First item on the agenda, Patty, would you take a roll, please?
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
John.
Here. Thank you. Next item is, do we have any conflict of interest by any of the board members?
I do not.
And, Don?
I, I have, oops. I have one in part two of the claims, and I will not be voting on that.
I do not.
I do not. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Question, on number seven, should, should that be like the, is it called Board of Adjustment, or is it Board of Equalization? Is it called Board of Adjustment?
It is, but we're not here next time.
So that's getting scratched.
Okay, we're gonna scratch it.
Okay.
Number seven.
For date?
For, for, for setting the value and date for?
Michelle said it was Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it called Board of Adjustment, or is it Board of Equaliza-, I guess I'd?
Board of Adjustments.
Okay. I thought Board of Adjustment was when we did the zoning.
I think Board of Equalization, actually.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, so I think.
Does it matter that we have to change it?
Okay.
Are we just gonna pick a date, or are we gonna skip that, now that we've decided what we think it is?
Do you need a date, that, right? No, no.
Okay.
They need a date.
We do.
So then we're leaving it on?
We, yeah, we need to pick a date, but I think it's called Board of Equaliz-, Board of Adjustment is when we do zoning. I think that's what, just a simple change, so. We know what you meant. That was no move.
I would move to a, I would move to approve the agenda.
Wait.
Despite the confusion.
Oh. I'll second that motion.
Just wait, Dan. Let's add on executive session, contract.
Okay.
For contracts, sorry about that.
And you're fine with adding the contract to your motion?
Yeah.
To approve what changes?
I move the approval of the agenda with the addition of the late coming contracts referred to by the state's attorney.
I'll second Wanda's motion.
Okay, I have a second, first, and a second on the agenda. Any further discussion by our commission? Hearing is any none. I need a call in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, standing sign. Motion through. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no person attack, personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments?
I can sign up, but go ahead.
Tom, would you please come up to the microphone?
Go ahead.
Sorry, we don't have any portable.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
My name is Thomas Bixler. I'm here tonight because for anybody who wishes to, I am taking my petitions for Yankton County Treasure and Yankton City Commission, and if anybody would like to sign them on their way out, that would be great. If not, that's fine, too. If they are, if one is signed, it has to be done by, by Republican signers. The other one can be signed by any political party because it's city commission. So if anybody wants to sign, I am here, and if anybody does not, that's fine, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other public comments, Lauren?
Good evening, Lauren Nelson, and I'll do my best here. My voice was great until I had to teach PE today, and then it went south. So hopefully I won't start coughing or anything like that, but, good evening, commissioners. I'm before you to talk about SB two oh nine, two oh one, which passed through a state senate committee Thursday morning, and will head to the full senate for deliberation and a vote tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Do you know about SB two oh one? This bill is the common ground our elected officials locally and in peer talk about as the promised land to settle the carbon pipeline debate. Our leaders say it is a win-win for everyone, including private property owners, local officials, and private companies such as Summit Carbon Solutions, Poet, and Gevo. What are these multimillion foreign-owned companies giving up and bringing to the table as their sacrifice in SB two oh one? Promises. Promises to pay $1 linear foot to a county for pipeline running through it. Road haul agreements, drain tile fixes, and being held liable for leaks and ruptures. Laughable because that pipeline is death if there's ever a rupture or a leak. Now, what is being offered as the counter to these federal tax-hungry companies? You and your power as the Yankton County Commission and all commissions across the state. Let me read section seven of SB two oh one. Quote, "A county, municipality, township, or other governmental unit may not pass or enforce an ordinance that regulates, restricts, or prohibits a gas or liquid transmission line or an electrical transmission line, which requires or holds a permit under chapter forty-nine, forty-one B, including without limitation any requirement or restrictions as to routing, setbacks, construction, operation, maintenance, and zoning permits." And as you read further, quote, "This act preempts any local law, ordinance, or regulation that conflicts with any provision of this chapter or any policy of the state implemented in accordance with this chapter, and notwithstanding any other provision of law, a governmental unit of this state may not enact or enforce an ordinance, local law, or regulation conflicting with or preempted by this chapter." Are you okay with giving up your right, your responsibility to decide safe, equitable, common-sense zoning for the people who live here? The people who elected you? Do you think what's best for Lincoln County is the best for Yankton County? Do you think what's best for North Central Zebok County is best for Yankton County? Do you think what's best for Pennington County is the best for Yankton County? If this bill passes, a bureaucrat in peer will enact blanket ordinances treating all counties, all four corners of the state, the same. You may be thinking, hey, Lauren, there's no carbon pipelines coming through Yankton. And what I say is, yet. And an interesting side about this bill is, the rest of the bill specifically says, quote, "Pipelines carrying carbon dioxide," unquote. But in section seven, the one I just read to you, there's no distinction. It simply says, quote, "A gas or liquid transmission line or an electric transmission line," unquote. Is this bill slipping on a slippery slope towards involving solar and wind complexes? Nullifying what this commission voted upon in December, and possibly what the current wind task force is working on now? I think Yankton County is a pretty special place, including the people who live here and its land, and I'm sure you do, too. Are you willing to give up your rights, your responsibilities as the keepers of this county, as the guardians of Yankton County, for promises made by bureaucrats and peer? Are you willing to give up so much for some minor crumbs from these multimillion-dollar companies such as Summit, Gevo, and Poet? Once lost, these rights and these responsibilities that you have, right now, will never return, ever. I urge all members of this commission to call, text, or email Senator Hunoff tonight and her colleagues, and tell them no on SB two oh one. And I urge all of you sitting here and those of you watching via YouTube to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Any other public comments? Hearing is seeing none, public comment is closed. Next item on the agenda, Register of Deeds, twenty twenty-three, fourth quarter, for Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. Beautiful day today. Looks like we have some more of those in the near future, anyway. I'll start with my fourth quarter report. We collected $86,000 in the fourth quarter, and we saw a total of $47.2 million in real estate sold. So both of those were our two biggest numbers for the year in terms of fees collected. The fourth quarter was our best, and real estate sold the fourth quarter was our best. Moving on to the annual report, we had over 8,000 transactions last year. These, of course, include vital records, land records, copy requests, liens. And some of those totals for the year include 1,559 liens, which was up by 231 from the previous year. We had 1,154 death records, 1,138 birth records, 880 deeds, 533 mortgages, 540 mortgage satisfactions, 626 copy requests, 317 marriage certificates, 171 burial permits, 172 marriage licenses, 101 easements, and quite a few of those were due to the Highway eighty-one expansion project. And we had 40 loan assignments and 78 plats, which were up by 12 from the year before. Total real estate sales was 140.9 million for the year, and that's down certainly from 2021 and 2022, but it was still our third-best year in terms of dollar amount of real estate sold. Two best months were June and November. We went over $20 million real estate sold in June. Not due to any one sale, really, just a lot of activity that month. In November, we actually saw 24.5 million in real estate sold, and the biggest factor in that was a $10 million sale, and that involved two of those really huge kind of luxury apartment buildings in the Hillcrest area. That was our biggest sale of the year.
Does that, any, is that a record for a month, or, or not? About 24.5, okay.
No, but it's a good, that was a very good month.
Pretty outstanding, yeah.
Good question. I bet it's close. I'll have to check on that. Moving on to births, so we have two kinds of birth numbers here, and the reason I keep track of this is because, you know, we issue birth certificates, and I find it interesting. Maybe you will, too. So we saw 510 in-county births in 2023. 506 of those occurred at Evera Sacred Heart Hospital. A ten-year average for births occurring in Yankton County, and mind you, that includes non-residents. The ten-year average is 578. And that's come down. From 2014 to 2018, we were averaging 626 births per year. Now, for the last five years, we've averaged 531. And I think that's also true across the nation. The birth rate is down. In terms of resident births, we saw a ten-year low there with just 222. The ten-year average for Yankton County resident births is about five per week. We averaged 277 from 2014 to 2018, but for the last five years, it's been down to 244. We had 171 burial permits, which is above our ten-year average of 163. Moving on to deaths, again, the, we have totals for deaths that occur in Yankton County, which includes non-residents, and then we have just the resident death number. So we saw 274 in-county deaths, and ten-year average is 286, so it's nice to see that come down a little bit. For Yankton County resident deaths, we had 251, which is exactly the ten-year average for Yankton County, 251. Leading cause, now this, this next number is always a year behind, but this is leading causes of Yankton County resident deaths in 2022. And as always, as always the case, heart disease was number one, cancer was number two, and Alzheimer's is frequently number three. Leading causes for a 12-year total, heart disease, number one, cancer, number two, Alzheimer's, number three. We had 172 marriage licenses sold last year, and that's, that's the highest we've had in about six years. That's above our ten-year average of 166. We had 70 divorces. These are divorce degrees completed, not initiated, and we had 70, which is a ten-year high. Ten-year average is 59. As I might have mentioned earlier, we collected 297,594 in total fees for the year. Below our ten-year average. Breakdown of that 297,000 was 140,980, or 47% was from land transfer fees. 77,000 or 26% is from real estate recording fees. 45,280 or 15% was from vital record fees, and 33,806 or 11% was collected from copy fees. County liens, we had 1,430, which is a six-year high, and that's been going up now for the last few years. That was up by 227 from 2022. Of the 1,430 county liens, 1,069 of those were for poor relief, and the other 361 were for court-appointed legal counsel. I was gonna mention the, I said that the ten-year average, we came in below the ten-year average for fees collected. Big reason for that, one big reason, is we've seen a real drop in mortgages and satisfactions, and that's because the interest rates being high, where just, people aren't refinancing at the clip that they, they used to. And so hopefully we'll get those interest rates down, and the real estate activity will be up. That's all I have. I'm sure, glad to take any questions.
Great report, Brian. Thank you. I would ask, if, with your experience, are there any critical areas that we should be attentive of going forward as a commission?
Well, you know, I appreciate the question. I don't know if there's anything the commission can do to affect any of these numbers. I think they're largely market-driven. So all we can do is just sit by and watch and keep track. I don't know that there's anything, you know, in terms of like, for instance, birth rate is down, death rate is up, you know, what are we gonna do about that? But it's interesting to know and then see some of the causes for that. I think one reason the death rate was up for the last five years compared to the five before, one factor was COVID. We had, I think, about 70 COVID deaths in that five years, and that didn't even used to be a factor in the previous five years, so.
Brian, the county liens, are those against, are those just a lien on the person, or are those a lien against property? Like, what kind of lien is that?
Those are just the person. However, if somebody wants to buy property, buy a house, the title company will, will see that. They'll require that that be paid before they let the house sale move forward.
Yeah, but if, you know, if that person, you know, for poor relief, they, they get a lien or ambulance or whatever, but if they don't have property or they don't buy property, that's pretty much an uncollectible.
Right. Legal descriptions of any property they own are not mentioned on those liens. But again, they, it will become an issue if they try to buy a house without satisfying that lien, because that's what title companies do. They look for every lien you could possibly have, and if you have one, they'll make you satisfy it before, you know, let the loan go through, generally.
Thank you.
So, so Brian, of those 1,430 liens in 2023, is there, can you just shoot a percentage of them that have been taken care of, or?
I could get you that number. I don't have it with me.
John, I don't think your mic's on. There you go.
Is there a percentage of, of those liens, those 1,430 liens that?
I doubt many of those have been paid, because those are just in the new year. A lot of times, they get, the payments trickle in, you know, over a 10, 15-year period.
Is, is there a percentage of, of liens over the last five years that you could provide us with?
Yeah, I can find that out for you, John. You bet.
Okay. That'd be interesting to see how many are still hanging out there to?
I'll bring that to the next quarterly report.
Okay, perfect.
I'm sure it's not very much.
No.
Well, yeah, we, we don't see as many paid as we'd like.
I understand, but it. This is where the Obligation Recovery Center would really help the county out with, you know, collecting.
Which was turned down in the legislative session.
Do you have a list of just county liens?
Well, we have a file with just county liens, yep.
How far back does that? How far back does that go?
Well, uh, goes back to the, we were, we see, well, those were state liens. I think the county liens go back to about the eighties. So, there was a year, I don't know if you remember it, Patty, but there was a year at, at some point there before I became Registered Deeds, where they basically forgave certain liens.
That was nineteen seventy-six.
Okay. That was, they forgive, so anything before seventy-six is basically forgiven. Okay, thank you.
We have liens though still, like, back from nineteen fifties.
Yep, yeah, we're getting some of the state liens satisfied recently that are from the fifties.
Does that money come in up here, or where you talk about?
That goes to the auditor. She collects those, and then she lets us know that they've been paid.
We can file a release upstairs.
Do you collect interest on those liens?
I'd move approval of the Registered Deeds Quarterly Report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the count? Hearing seeing done, I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve, against, say, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Brian.
Oh, by the way, I like your pictures outside, in the hallway.
Next item. They do. Very nice. Approve highway bids. Mike.
Yeah, we went up for, uh, our normal, our yearly supplies, bids, and chip seal and all that stuff. Did you guys have any questions on any of that? We did have, uh, this year, we had a, two extra bid on fuel and a few other things, but I thought bids come back pretty decent.
Any questions on the bids from the council? Need a motion to approve those?
Who approval of the bids?
Motion by Don, second by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The next was, uh, Bridge Inspection Resolution. Every year, we have to do this resolution, um, letting the state know who our engineers are going to be. For the past five, six years, we've had I-Meg. Um, I don't see a reason to change. Um, they're pretty involved with us, with the grants and stuff that we've gotten, so.
We're still doing the annual inspections of the James River Bridges.
Yep.
And, uh, I know, uh, this is before your guys' time, but I, I think that's something we need to continue to do, because we've, we've caught some pretty, uh, big issues before they got expensive, and, and it's just, uh, with those bridges being seventy years old, I, I think it just makes sense to do that. And the state, do they pay the major, eighty percent of that? So the state pays eighty percent of those, so. It's definitely saved us money over the, over the years we've done it, so.
And all the bridges get done every other year, so this year will be the year all the bridges get done.
Yeah. I'd, uh, make a motion to approve the Bridge Inspection Resolution program.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the Bridge Inspection Resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next is, uh, Highway Striping Project. Um, I guess we need to approve, um, Dakota Traffic Solutions, or Services.
Move approval.
Are they the people that always do it? Or the only ones that wanted to do it?
No, see, normally, this was all done through the state. Um, the state no longer does this. Um, so the counties that you see on the list there were the counties that got together to get our group done, uh, bid all at once.
To get a better rate?
To get a better rate, because when the state did it, well, they might go up to Belfus, and then Spearfish, you know, that, that striper had to bounce all over the state, so we went this route with us getting together, hoping that we could get a better price, because we're all in the southeast corner of the state.
And have we been getting a better price?
From what I looked at, from comparing to last year, yes.
Okay. Then I would second.
I have a motion by?
Dan.
Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the striping bid. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Hey, you, you guys keep your dad in line now, okay? All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Values and date for Board of Equalization.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Goken, Director of Equalization Office, um, just our annual touch-in on what values are doing for twenty twenty-four before they get sent out March first. Of course, the values are driven by the real estate market. Um, we've seen a steady market this past year. We have to adjust the values, the assessments due to the market to be, um, in line with codified law, South Dakota administrative rules, USPAP, IAAO, and all of our county and local regulations. Some important dates coming up. March first, the assessment notices will be mailed. March fifteenth is the last day to appeal to your local court clerk at your local board. So any organized townships and small towns, they have to appeal by the fourteenth. Those local boards meet the eighteenth through the twenty-second. Um, April twenty, excuse me, April second is when, um, any unorganized townships in the city of Yankton of, needs their written appeal to the county auditor, and then you guys will meet in between April ninth through the thirtieth. And of course, taxes, um, I guess we go through this every year. It's a big misconception that the, um, assessments are driven by, are budget-driven, but it's really, it's not base, a rate-based driven per the state law. It always goes down to what the budget can increase, which is only three percent, and the growth factor, um, the levies, if your value goes up, the levies go down, and our job in equalization is to ensure the equitable distribution of the tax burden between, um, property owners. Some areas that we, um, did this past year, reappraisal projects. We also reviewed all the building permits, um, county, small towns, city of Yankton. We did nine hundred and ninety-six transfers and updated all of our property records in that timeframe. We also processed seventy-five splits and plats, and then all the exempt paperwork goes through our office as well. You may notice a little change between Brian's report and our report. Our legal assessment date is November first, so any transaction plats after November first goes for our twenty-twenty-five assessment, not our twenty-twenty-four assessment, and that's in codified law, again. Numbers, we are at two point nine five five billion. Countywide, we went up three point nine percent. Growth was one point one seven percent, so the market changes are one point nine nine percent of that. The market changes are for, if, the reason we have to change is because codified law states we have to be at eighty-five percent of the sale price, and to figure, calculate that out, you take the assessed value of the property and divide it by the sale price. So we have to be at a state minimum. Other changes, ag land changes, um, ag land is assessed on productivity. So crop soils actually went down one point one nine percent, and grass soils went up three point zero four percent. We have eighteen road districts. Um, one is new for twenty-four, one was new for twenty-three. So those are, um, a shift in our, somewhat a shift of our numbers on where they're being reported.
Michelle, is that, that one hundred and forty million dollars?
That's for the road district valuation.
Is that, is that the secondary road tax, or is that the valuation for the, the whole road district?
That's the valuation of the total road district.
Could, could you give me the secondary road tax that comes out of that? Are you able to do that at some?
I can try with the help of Patty, 'cause we don't, we just do assessed values.
It'd be interesting to know, because when a road district is formed, the secondary road tax that does come to the county to maintain all those, actually, you know, then goes to the road districts. It'd just be interesting to see how much, 'cause that's basically shifted away from the county to the road district.
If we didn't have any road districts, that would go to the, that would be on secondary road.
Yes. So that is the number you're looking for, then, I believe.
But that, you know, that's pretty substantial, that is not going to the county for us to maintain our roads in, in those areas, so.
But it would be a levy on that, right?
And that's assessed value.
The county doesn't get any money.
No, no, I understand that, but it would be, if it wasn't a road district, it would be a levy on that one forty, one hundred and forty million.
Whatever highway, whatever the CPI growth is, that's what they.
Yes, yes.
And then they have an opt-out of fifty thousand, too, so.
Comparisons side by side of the past five, five years, um, where the values changed, increased, decreased. Questions?
It's like the valuation of the city of Yankton continues to grow. It's almost fifty percent of the, forty-seven point six percent of that's the valuation for the whole county. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Pretty high charge, so.
Can't wait. So, Michelle, I have one question, backing up to the previous screen on the, the crop land diminishing by one point nine, one nine, and the grass improving. Is that because crop land is turned into grass and people are not farming as much?
It's all statistical out of SDSU on what commodity prices are, what your rating on your soils are, what your property could produce. There's an eight-year Olympic average. If you want more information, we have nice, big pamphlets for you.
No, that's, that's fine. I just, I'm just, just wondering if, you know, people are not actually farming, they're turning more into pasture or whatever, so.
And we're not, we don't use actual use in South Dakota. We use productivity as what the soil ratings are. So if you choose to pasture some good soils that, or even moderate soils that are crop rating, that is a management decision, so you're being assessed at the crop. Um, tax increment districts, we have one new this past year, two new the previous year. And that's the total of them and the total increment and the total base. So the increment, any assessed value over that, over the base, goes towards paying off those tax, those TIF districts. Of course, they're all in the city, except Dakota Plains. There's your chart, Dan.
Nice chart.
Forty-eight percent of the assessed value is in the city of Yankton. Small towns is one percent. Um, organized townships is twenty-two percent, unorganized is twenty-nine percent. Of course, your unorganized townships are the lake and east of town, which are highly populated as well. Ag values, just kind of to show you statistically in a graph on where, if we were to assess them on market value, the dark green would be up where the light green is, same with the red. So that's what productivity has done for us, is to level them out more so than what the market has been doing. And this is only Yankton County. If you look at other counties, theirs would be just the same, or if they had ag sales. The other thing I wanted to point out is we had eight ag sales this past year, only. One of those was grass. So the negative amount for the grass, the green, that's off of one sale. So it doesn't really show you much statistically, but it is what it is. Um, a little bit of our beacon usage. Um, basically, per request, per visitor, gone up slightly in the one year. Um, the requests overall per year really jumped in two thousand nine and twenty-twenty. But it definitely has helped. Now, all of these requests would be people calling or coming into our office, which you still can do. Um, it's just more accessible at the, at your fingertips. Values, property values go up, your levies go down, which we did see this past year as well, 'cause last year, we had a large increase, and this year, we'll have multiple increases again. I don't have percentage overall, um, but average percentage was fifteen. We did have some areas that went up forty percent, so anywhere between five and forty. It's a huge gap, but the average was about fifteen to nineteen, actually. Questions on my numbers?
No, I really like how you brought up the point, though, that, you know, valuations are just a part of it. It's the local government's budget that also is a big part of it, and we all realize that eighty, on average, eighty-seven percent of our budget mandated by state law, and we see juvenile detention skyrocketing, and, uh, court, uh, court services all skyrocketing. Things that used to belong to the state, but the state has pushed off onto the counties, and, uh, that is a direct relation to property tax increasing, and while, uh, state sales tax has actually been reduced, so, I mean.
So I have one quick question. Um, last year, we didn't do any adjustment on commercial properties. This year, did we have enough sales to make any adjustments or make any judgments?
Not significant enough to show accurate numbers, a trend. Um, we are using older cost tables, which we need to look into updating our cost tables, and I, I see both sides of it. Um, I, it's gonna be a challenge to do, and it's something that we need to undertake in our office and get our cost tables going. But it's, we also have a very fairly new office, um, so hopefully, I, I specifically sat down days and looked at our commercial sales, and they just did not have a pattern, which is what are, what these are driven by, the sales of what similar types of properties are selling for. So the only other thing, I guess, would be, um, to set a date for the Board of Equalization. We were looking at April nineteenth. Would that day work for any of you guys? It's a Friday.
Good for me.
What day?
April ninth, Friday, April nineteenth.
Works for me.
What time, morning?
We usually start at noon or, no. Yeah? We usually start at noon or one.
Ten, I thought.
Doesn't that depend on how many we have?
We started at ten. We initially planned at ten and then changed it.
I think, don't we eat first and then?
Will you know how many appeals you have?
April third, after mail, proper mailing.
Do you guys wanna just?
Why don't we start at ten and then quit early if there's not enough?
I'm, I'm fine with that, or we just block out the time, and I believe that's what we've done in the past, and then if there's less, then we only do it.
It's up to you guys what you wanna do.
Don't we have to, for transparency purposes, tell everybody when we start? Well, let's pick ten, 'cause we can always get done early.
Fine with that.
We stop for another ten?
It's up to you guys.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that, Patty, or not, to set that?
I don't think so. I think just, I'll put in the minutes that the.
Okay. And on, um, April ninth, you guys will have to convene, per codified law, and open the Board of Equalization.
Okay.
Can we do that in the morning on the ninth? Do we do it at nine?
Eleven?
I can't do it that day, but you all can do it.
Eleven?
You don't need me for that.
Ten, compliments?
Well, then we just will do nine.
Okay.
Actually, ten works better for me. Nine's.
Ten.
Time for my schedules.
It's ten AM, four, nine, then?
Yes.
So if we have less appeals, do you want to come back and adjust the time on the nineteenth, or just start at ten, period?
Start at ten to get done.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Any questions? Assessment notices will be mailed March first. Can't wait.
Can I get a motion to approve the, uh, quarterly report?
Motion to approve.
Oh, okay, don't, don't need a motion, okay.
Good report, though. Good information.
Thanks, Michelle. Very good information.
Good year.
So, moving on. Building permit system and possible software change. Harry, you're up.
So everybody, you all have seen what I'm gonna show, so I'm not gonna show everything. My jump drive isn't coming up. There we go. So we have developed the forms for each one of these permits, addressing buildings, the CUP variance, floodplain, plats, drainage, rezone. So if you guys are wanting to move forward with this, uh, this information could just be put on the county website, however your web designer wants to do it. So I'm just gonna go into the, the building permit one. Just click the link here. And so every form that we have, uh, application, it'll look and feel the same. You just answer the questions, the applicant name, phone, address, uh, your contractor. And on this form, when you type in your applicant, usually the applicant and the owner are sometimes the same person, so it'll just copy their information down. If it's not, they can override it. Architect design, that's just for some historic information, uh, again, if there isn't anything, they could just type none. The nice feature about the, the building permit, if you click within the city or the ETJ area, the map has a red tone to it, which won't allow them to continue on and submit, um, until they click outside the ETJ. And then now you can see it's, it's, it's white. If they click within the red area and they try to submit, it's gonna give them an error and tell them that they have, uh, selected a, a point within the ETJ and to contact the city. One thing that it'll do, uh, later on down in the form, it will copy across, uh, their legal description and site, um, information. But again, you're just going through, answering the questions, they're pretty straightforward. Down at the bottom, we did put in a lot more information of the setbacks. And then based off of where you click, it will also give you what zoning district you're in, it'll also let you know visually what your setbacks are, uh, from the front yard, rear and sides. And then again, you just type in your estimated project costs and then that, based on your formula, will calculate your, um, your fees. You just upload your information. If you want to read the acknowledgements, uh, with the CAFO, the fire protection, and then the key box. One thing we did add, or possible other permits that you might have to look at, like the state electrical and state plumbing. It's kind of some helpful information and you can just sign. And then, uh, you know, we added this in here to prevent, uh, bots and that kind of stuff, so it was, it was a good suggestion. Pretty, pretty simple to add. And then once you hit submit, what it's gonna do is it's gonna send an email to, uh, not only the applicant, but Gary's office. And I believe we also have it sending to two people in the assessor's office, just so they know that there's been a building permit triggered, as well as a recap of the information they, they typed. And then once it's submitted on Gary's, uh, software that he'll be using, the, uh, the point, the geographic point will show, and then from there, he'll be able to go in and do his assessment, do whatever he needs to do to the property to, uh, either approve or deny. One of the other things that we have, if I go back to my Word document here at the bottom, this is that dashboard. If you're wanting to open it up to the public, that is fine, if you don't want it, we'll just delete it. But it's, this is just to give you an idea of, uh, what you can do. You can just pull some statistics from the information that's being collected. And again, it's an interactive map, uh, again, these are just test sites. So you can click on the, uh, point, you can get the building permit information. And then also the applicant, uh, can come to the site and see what the status is, whether or not it's been, um, approved, uh, active, approved, completed, denied, whatever it is. And again, this is more or less for the planning and zoning office and the public, if you, if you wanna, you know, tweak it, obviously, we, I just kind of threw some information so you can kind of get a general idea. That's kind of where we're sitting, uh, everything's been ready to go for the last few weeks. So I guess it's just a matter of making your switch if you want to.
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, plan out that switch, making sure that everything that's still there on geo-permits gets archived and is always available. We have to make sure that we don't have a loss of continuity here.
Yeah.
And then, um, did you have a form for zoning enforcement made?
Enforcement?
I don't think I saw that on that list on the Word doc.
Think that one, I got the rezone, drainage, plat, floodplain, variance, CUP building and addressing. So, no, but it'd be, I can't imagine that one being too challenging to put together.
Yeah, and then the last quick question on the, back on the dashboard, which, I like the dashboard, the dashboard is something I think we would want to show to the public, hopefully. The maps, the overhead, the overhead view map there, and that's being generated, that is, that is our aerial data that we are showing.
That's the latest pictometry imagery with, uh, we have roads, uh, so there's a layers button, there's floodplain on it, roads. General parcel lines, there's really no information regarding the parcels, um, outside of just, um, site address and, uh, owner, owner name, I believe. I didn't want to conflict with anything else that the, the county is doing with that. And then any other special layers that, um, zoning office thinks should be on there, uh, we can add. But it's, you can customize this, tweak it, you can do whatever at any time, it won't mess up the, the data that's being generated from the, the forms.
And then we have, and then obviously the, the forms, the dashboard, all of this work that you've done, we are able to archive and keep a restore point for, in case something does get.
Yep, yeah, so the, the forms are actually, it's like a glorified Excel spreadsheet, pretty much. Uh, so that stuff will be, uh, backed up, so yeah, if something does go wrong, you can republish it. On Arc Online, periodically you can go in there and just back up the data. You know, Esri does a pretty good job on their side, too, if something goes majorly wrong. But, uh, yeah, then you can, you know, if you guys end up hiring an IT person and they want to take control of this stuff, they'll be able to modify that Excel spreadsheet and make tweaks if they want to, but, um, the only thing, you just have to be careful that you're not changing the, the data, because then you might overwrite something, uh, but you can change the look and feel of the form at any time, pretty much.
I think the only missing piece is just the, um, zoning enforcement, a form to do zoning, a path for a citizen to start a zoning enforcement.
Is that more like the complaints?
Complaints, yeah. And then I think if we want to start trying to implement this, I think the next step would be maybe Gary, if you, maybe it's between John, Gary and me and you get together, we'll, uh, talk about that transition plan and the steps that we take to, uh, modify and go over to the system.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry.
Do we have a timeline, or Gary, do you want to just get with them and then get a time? And I, I'm fine when you guys want to transition, it looks like we're about ready, you know?
I think, I think, uh, we can plan something next week to get together.
Yeah, and I should have that complaint one, oh, probably have it done tomorrow, it should be pretty straightforward.
It's gonna be the, uh, kind of similar where they have to have, uh, their information and all that stuff, right?
Yeah, I'll get with Gary on what information he wants to pull from the person making the complaint.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Okay, Preston, you're up.
Well, good, good evening. I'm gonna actually hand out a sheet of paper to you guys. We're gonna talk about food bid first, right?
You're up, it's your call.
Yeah, we'll do food bid, how's that sound?
How many bids did you get?
Two. So the paper I just handed out to you guys, uh, when I took office, um, this is the price that, uh, we signed for the year. So if you guys, if you guys get copies in the packet of what the actual bids came back as. So the paper I just handed out to you, um, in the budget of two thousand twenty-three, um, the previous administration had budgeted about two hundred and twenty-five thousand for food services in the jail. When I took office and the inflation costs went up, they told me there was gonna be an eight percent increase when I took office. So I had to come up with a solution, how I could drive the costs down, um, they had a hot breakfast, a hot lunch and a hot supper. So what I did is I eliminated the hot breakfasts, went to cold, that drove the price points down. And just by doing the cold, hot, hot, um, we still were over budget by thirty-one thousand dollars for food services. So if I wouldn't have eliminated the hot breakfast, we'd be probably fifty thousand over. So this year, uh, well, in, in June of last year, I did the budget, I made a proposal of two hundred and sixty thousand for food services, because based on the end of this year, it was two hundred and fifty-six thousand for last year. So I was trying to find a way how I could drive the, the price down. So, uh, Trinity Food Services is currently who we have in the jail, so I thought they were gonna do another three percent hike on us. And that's on top of the eight percent they did last year, so I said, let's do a food bid out to see if we can drive the price down. So there's gonna be a little bit of good news here for you guys, so just stay with me. So, uh, with the, the two bids, we got one from Trinity Food Services, who we currently have, and then we had Summit Foods. And, um, my recommendation is to still continue to do the cold breakfast, um, hot lunch and hot suppers, just because of the price points. These are based off of a twenty-five hundred calorie, um, food, uh, scale for the inmates. Uh, and they vary from two thousand to three thousand, but twenty-five hundred is usually the recommended amount. And so, so the first sheet of paper I handed out to you guys, you can see, we usually hover right around ninety inmates to ninety-nine, sometimes we dip over a hundred. But last year, the price was two dollars and fifty, just about fifty-two cents a meal. With the new bid out, if we, if we stuck with Trinity, which that's my recommendation, uh, we're gonna save a penny, about a penny, uh, for every meal. So that's three meals a day, yeah, I know, look at that, some positivity here today, so I'm glad to see this. And then if we, you know, go over a hundred inmates.
Does that include dessert?
What's that?
Does that include dessert?
Well, yeah, if you're a good, if you're a good inmate. Uh, and then if you're over a hundred, then there's a four cent saving there, so just by doing the bid out, we, we saved from the three percent hike and we drove the price down maybe a penny, four cents a meal, so. Uh, now, obviously, if we went to Summit, there's a, a bigger increase, like fifteen cents, uh, you know, if you're right around the ninety to ninety-nine inmate, so. Trinity's already there, uh, we did the bid out the proper way, Patty even called me on a Friday to come in and open up the packages, so.
How many kosher meals do you serve, realistically?
What's that?
How many kosher meals do you serve realistically?
Not many, it just depends on the inmates that we get, so there's not a whole lot there. But my recommendation is to stick with Trinity and stay with the cold breakfast, hot lunch, hot supper. But it's your guys' call.
Do we need a motion to stay with?
I move, I move we approve the Trinity bid.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, motion by Ryan, second by Wanda, to approve the Trinity Services Group, uh, bid for inmate meals. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Perfect. Uh, second thing I have is, um, last year in the budget, I proposed that we, um, look for a new transport van for our current twenty-seventeen Chevy transport van, which we bought, I believe, brand new. It's currently, and this is the last recorded miles on it, was about a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles on it. So, um, the state automatically does bids on vehicles, so I didn't have to bid this one out. And when the state does the bid, there's some places, like in Pierre, that might have a better bid, um, and they're, they're part of the state process. I called down to Lewis and Clark Ford, um, I wanted to, you know, keep it a local purchase if we can. So they're gonna honor, uh, the current state bid if we went with the Ford, uh, van, uh, that I'm looking at. Dodge, I think this can, discontinued their current one, so we're kind of stuck with Ford. So if you're not a Ford guy, I'm kind of sorry, so.
What about Chevy, does Chevy make vans?
What's that?
Chevy make vans?
Uh, not, not to the size of these.
How many inmates do you transport at any one time?
Uh, it could be up to ten.
I'm sorry?
It could be up to ten.
I know you can do up to ten, how many do you routinely take up to the pen?
Uh, well, if it's up to the pen, it just depends on if judge just says, you know, has a bad day and says, you're gonna go to the pen today. Uh, these are mostly for the marshals, is what we, we use the, the van for.
So we're transporting the marshal people?
Yes, which I renegotiated the contract.
For the one hundred and five?
Yep, but, uh, for transport pay, when we do the transporters, we get forty-two bucks an hour now versus the twenty-two, I think, that we were giving, so.
Okay, so it appears to me that there are two bids on here, not?
Yeah, so one of the vans is for rear, uh, rear wheel drive and the other one's all wheel drive. So those are just the two.
But it's for only one van?
For only one van, yep.
So it's pick A or B?
Yep, so, uh, the recommendation was to do the all wheel drive, just because it's safer for the, uh, the transporters, but we're talking, was about four thousand dollar difference.
I think that's probably a, a smart decision, you know, with transporting and the weather conditions, it's, it's not.
When the weather's bad, they don't transport, that's just silly.
They can now.
Well, it depends, sometimes we still are required to, so I think the, the court deal that we had the other day with one of the inmates, we strategically tried to get somebody out of the, the jail and get them up to Sioux Falls right away before the snow flew, so. Weather's bad, sometimes we still do transports, even with, uh, mental health holds, but obviously this is the van, so hopefully we don't haul ten people to, of there on Sioux Falls. So that's the difference, the two price points, uh, rear wheel or all wheel.
And what trade-in are you getting for the two thousand seventeen with a hundred and seventy thousand miles?
Well, the thing is, I'm not guaranteed of getting this van in, it could be up to eight months, so we'll still be driving the current van, um, and then we'll surplus it probably out.
Okay, so what you're saying is there's no trade, no, no trade-in?
No.
Okay.
No, we, yeah, no, unless the state. No, we, yeah, no. Unless the state attorney's office wants it, they can.
I'd move we approve the purchase for the four-wheel drive van.
All wheel drive.
And it does come with the, with the state bid that will honor the, I think it's a five-year, 100,000 powertrain motor and transmission, where if you just bought it yourself, it's usually like three years, 5,000 miles, probably, I don't know.
I'll second Don's motion.
Or four days, whichever is longer.
What's that?
Or four days, whichever is longer.
Yeah.
Which would be the, the first one, the X, 56. The X9Y0.
Is that 56,988?
Plus a $399 fee.
The docking fee, I'm sure.
Will they, will this include, I'm sure we gotta add things to it on the inside. Is that, that's probably the extra as well, right?
Yeah, and the, the guys that are down installing our current, our new camera system for cop cars, they're down here, so I'm gonna have them take a look at the Chevy and see if we can utilize the current patrician, or the partition that's in there to help divide. They might just have to buy some brackets to alter it, or it's like anything else, you gotta buy it all new, so.
Eight months from now when you get it?
Yeah, eight months from now, probably.
So what's the $399 fee for? We've already got destination and delivery of 2,100.
I believe that's their docking fee. There was, that's, every place has a docking fee. So I wanted to keep it local if I could. Lewis and Clark Ford said they were gonna honor the state bid, even though that they're not, they're not required to, because they didn't do the state bid, but they'll.
Then you're not required to buy it there.
True. I can go to, yeah, I could go to Sioux Falls, or whatever, but I figured for maintenance-wise, it's right there. Just be, it'd be good for a local business to get the sale.
So I have a motion by Don, second by Dan, to purchase the new, the van at 56,988 plus 399 docking, or extra fee. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Preston.
Thank you.
Gary, you're up on the maybe rezone.
All right. We have a second reading. Applicants requesting a rezone of parcel and RT to moderate density rural residential R2 per Article 18, Section 1809 and Article 20, Section 2003. Said property is legally described as the south 217 and 80 hundreds feet of the east 766 and 50 hundreds feet, excepting the east 50 feet thereof, located in the south, 13.2 acres of the southeast quarter, Section 9, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per plat, recorded in Book S18, page 257. And the applicant is here if you have any other questions.
Any questions?
Do we have to ask for public comment?
I will ask for public comment at this point. You wish to speak?
Do.
Public comment's closed.
The only question I have is, Patty, do you want us to run through the findings of fact for the rezone?
That matches the criteria.
Do you have it up?
I could do it if you don't have it.
Do you have it up?
I do.
Go ahead.
Why, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Findings of fact relative to the maybe rezone are that all documents required for the application have been satisfactorily completed. The individual petitioner has provided a completed amendment or change of zone request. The lot is currently non-reform, conforming, and rezoning will bring it more into compliance. And the non-compliance is not a result of the applicant's actions and will not confer a special privilege upon the applicant. Notice of public hearing has been mailed to all necessary parties on December 28, 2003, and published in the Yankton President DeCotin on December 29, 2003, as well as January 5, 2024. Public hearing was held on January 9, 2024, and the applicant was present at that time. The Planning Commission makes findings that the rezone is justified and is recommended. The Planning Commission made the finding that the rezone will make possible a reasonable use of the subject real estate, and further that the rezone is in harmony with the intent of the ordinance, and that the potential rezone will not be injurious to the neighborhood. No petition for amendment or change in the zoning has been recommended. The lot is currently zoned rural transitional, which limits the possible use of the subject property. Before the amendment or petition for rezoning is recommended, the zoning commission found that, the Planning and Zoning Commission found that the potential rezone is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and all zoning regulations will be followed. The zoning, planning and zoning have determined that it is, the proposed rezone is in compliance with all ordinances. Ingress and egress exists. Off, right-of-way parking is present. No refuse or service areas are required. Utilities are present. Screening and buffering is not required. Signage is not required. Required yards and other open spaces, the required yards are met, and general compatibility with adjacent properties is satisfied. As far as recommending the approval of any petition for amendment, the Planning Commission has not required any.
Move approval of the request.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Any, I think Ryan beat down.
Well, Ryan first.
Any further discussion? None? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Congratulations. You're still up, Gary.
We have eight plats tonight to go through. First one being plat of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of List acreage in the east half, the southwest quarter of Section 4, lying south of the public highway, the east half of the northwest quarter of Section 9, and the east 10 acres of the south, 20 acres of the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 9, all in Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
And all these have, are gonna have egress, and, okay. They, and, and we have to approve it because it meets the criteria, but they just know you pretty much can't do anything with rural transitional? I mean, as opposed to rezoning this, or?
Yeah, well, they're, they're basically, this plat's dividing it up to distribute to family members.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second one's plat of Track 1, chop addition in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 21, Township 94 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Don. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one is plat of Lot 5 of Block 4, law overlooked subdivision in the southeast quarter of Section 7, and in the northeast quarter of Section 18, all in Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by Dan, second by.
Second.
Wanda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one's plat of lots 9, 10, and 11, located in the Incan Track 13 in Section 15, Township 93 North, Range 57 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by Wanda.
Second.
Second by Don. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one's plat of Track B in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 22, Township 94 North, Range 55 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one is plat of Tyler Jurgensen addition in the northeast quarter of southeast quarter of Section 35, Township 95 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one's plat of Tracks 1 and 2 of ID addition in the east half of the northwest quarter and the west half of the northeast quarter of Section 10 Township 95 North, Range 54 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by.
Second.
Dan, second by Don. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And the last one's plat of Track G Deer Ridge in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 8, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Live streaming discussion.
Okay, so the story there is, is I've actually got to meet with some of the other radio stations. They have all declined after talking, so we are with the original agreement with five-star streaming. We've, they've added in, they were fine with the additions of the, of a splash screen to add a disclaimer, and then as well as having a date timestamp on the screen, and we retain all digital rights, so.
I'd move, I'd move approval of that agreement.
I have a motion by Wanda.
I, the only thing, do we have, like, the actual agreement that we can see? And, and the only thing I, I said is I have got contacted by a couple people, and they, they didn't see anything in the packet. I'm, I'm fine with everything that we're doing. I think it's good, but I'd like to see things like that in the packet.
Yeah, I apologize. I was out for the flu last week, and so I didn't get this in.
I understand, and I'm, I'm totally for it, but I, I would say, let's put it in the, you know, as an issue of transparency and everything, put it in the packet.
Wasn't it in the packet the last time?
It was not the last time.
It was not, but.
And, and again, thank you for all the work on that. That's what I would like to see, but that's just me, so.
You need a second?
I have a, I have a motion by Wanda. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Don. Any further discussion?
I guess, again, I'd, I'd like to see it in the packet and prove it the next week.
Going forward.
Well, for this one too, because if, if, you know, I saw it last week, but, you know, nobody has seen the, the final document. It's just something we should try to all do, you know, myself included, so. That's my issue with it. I agree with doing it. I just think when we sign agreements, the public should be able to see it ahead of time.
Is this something that we need to? Can we add it to the packet so that it's on the website now? I mean, can?
I think it doesn't have to be in the packet for us to vote on it, correct? Can vote on it and just put it up.
Okay. So I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion?
No, I guess I, I support it, but if we're gonna vote on it, I'll, I'll probably vote against, not because I don't agree with it, but I just, I think these types of things need to be placed in the packet for transparency purposes, so. Again, appreciate all the hard work on it.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye. And I'm not, not against doing it. I just think it needs to be in the packet before we make those decisions.
Okay, noted, and we'll get it in, added, added to the website.
That's something, yeah, I think we all strive, could strive to do better, yeah, so.
Next up is the February 6th minutes. You get a motion to approve?
Move to approve. The February 6, 2024 minutes.
I have a motion to approve, second by Dan, a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the minutes from February 6 meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we have a, to approve the 2024 wage scale. That wasn't in, was in the packet, so do we need a motion?
It's in the packet.
We have to, every year we have to approve this.
Yes.
And it's just what you guys approved for this year.
Yep.
It's not nothing new. It's just you've already.
According to the matrix, this is the.
I, I would approve the existing wage sa, scale that is set forth in the matrix for the 2024 calendar year.
I have a motion by Wanda.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Claims. You get a motion to approve the claims?
I would move to approve group one of the claims, although I would like to put on the record that it hurts me that there's $47,000 in juvenile detention fees.
I'm sure it not only hurts you, Wanda, but.
Well, it hurts me.
So I have a motion to approve the claims. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We also have claims too, is that correct?
And I'll be abstaining from that.
I need a motion on the second claims.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Patty, how difficult would it be to take one, one month and, and find out all the legal expenses that are spent by the county?
Well, pretty easy, pretty, oh, everywhere in the state? Oh.
That includes.
That's gonna be.
Sheriff, it includes.
No, you just mean our county or every county?
Our county.
Oh.
I don't care about the others.
Well, that's very generous of you.
I mean, and.
You mean, just like the sheriff for transportation, or?
Well, there's a whole bunch of things. There's, there's a lot of things that end up in, in legal expenses. You pay the defender, you pay the.
Well, you can look them up in the.
I know you can. I'd like to know what the total amount is.
I mean, you can look them up and add them up, because you've got the sheriff, you've got the jurors fees.
I'm asking it to be done.
I think that's a good idea, Don. If we could put a document in the pack, in our pack, in the packet for legal fees or expenses, expenditures.
Do you, do you wanna include the inmate medical, the inmate food?
Yes, we should.
Sheriff, jail.
The transportation, the new bus that we just bought?
It, a lot of it really should be, you know, like the state's attorney's budget too. I mean, even this diversion, we're keeping somebody out of there.
Our public needs to know that it's costing them $100,000, or $120,000, or $150,000 a month.
I, I get that, but the public also has the ability to look at the claims every month.
My request is to have one month, just one month, at the next meeting on how much it is, and that, if that can be done, Patty.
It probably would make sense to do it at the last meeting of the month, because that's when we get the juvenile detention and, and the, kind of the final numbers. So it wouldn't be the next meeting, but it'd be the. So it wouldn't be the next meeting, but it'd be the, the, the second meeting.
Just anything legal.
Yes.
I think most people would be shocked at the amount of money that's spent on that.
I agree, I agree, just like we, we did, uh, put some numbers together in the, in the article on the juvenile detention. You know, it's, it's twenty-three thousand dollars for the sheriff to haul inmates up to our juveniles up to Sioux Falls or whatever that magic number was.
What it was, we had sixteen thousand last month, I think, on.
Forty-seven this month.
Yeah.
On defense.
Yeah.
Well, just, just buying.
Court-appointed attorneys.
Buying a van and juvenile detention was a hundred thousand dollars just this month, a mo- just for those two items.
Exactly, so.
And that doesn't include the food, the keeping them there, the washing, the inmate clothes, the inmate uniforms, the inmate medicine, it just.
Well, that's not, I mean, you're, you're gonna have to specify then more than you want just legal, 'cause if you want the medicine and.
Well, he said he wanted everything.
I don't think, I think we just need the legal, the legal aspects of what it takes to, to maintain the legal services for Yankton County.
And, and to Don's point, when we send out the, you know, tax assessments and everybody's gonna get sticker shock because property, it's mandated services by the state that we have no choice, we have to pay for it. Oh yeah, and by the way, the state's able to cut sales tax because they got so much money. But property taxes are at an all-time high and they're gonna continue to go up.
Okay, so we got a, we got a motion and a second on the second claims, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And I abstain.
Gotcha.
I would move approval of the auditor treasurer report.
Second.
And pooled cash report, I usually do that separate, but.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the auditor treasurer report, pooled cash report, further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. This is a time for our final public comment, anyone in the audience want to provide us with public comments? Seeing none, public comment is closed, anything for commissioner updates?
I have a rather lengthy one.
Okay, Don, you have the floor.
Monthly, uh, I attend the governor's office of economic developments meeting and they provide some information and I thought this would be a, a, a good place to put a good light on a lot that the state and, uh, the counties are doing and, uh, I'm just gonna read, read through these, there's several points, so it'll take five, ten minutes. First one, i- in rankings, y- uh, United Van Line released its annual national movers study. South Dakota ranked as the seventh most inbound state. The most common reasons for moving to South Dakota were jobs, family, and retirement. Next point, Wallet Hub released a study on the best and worst states to raise a family. South Dakota ranked eighth overall in our state's economy and low child costs were the highlighted. Same company, Wal- uh, Wallet Hub also re- released a study on the best and worst states to start a business. South Dakota, uh, assessable financing and low cost of doing business were highlighted. Both ranked in the top three among fifty states. General economy, six months of fiscal year twenty twenty-four ge- general fund data are in. To this point, South Dakota's ongoing general fund receipts for the fiscal year were ninety-six point three million, higher than those at this point last year, growth of seven point eight percent. This level of general fund, uh, receipts is also nine point seven percent above the legislative adopted, uh, estimate. Gross domestic product data for twenty twenty-three third quarter were released. After accounting for inflation, South Dakota's economy grew at an annualized rate of five point two percent, slightly outplacing national growth of four point nine percent in our region's growth of five point one percent. And industries in South Dakota that saw the largest percentage growth were construction, retail, and non-durable goods manufacturing. Next item, personnel income data were also released. South Dakota's collective wages and salaries grew at an annualized rate of five point nine percent, which also outpa- faces national growth at five point six percent and our region's growth at five point five percent. Next item, the continued growth in, in incomes combined with our state having the fourth lowest cost of living in the nation is resulting in exceptionally strong purchasing power. South Dakota's real average income is fourth highest of any state and eighteen point five percent higher than the national average. South Dakota's December business, uh, conditions index value was fifty-seven point two, a significant, significant boost from what it was, uh, in the prior month indicating more optimism about short-term economic growth for South Dakota. South Dakota's index of value remains the highest of any state in the region. Next item, the U.S. and the, and mid-America values are respectively forty-seven point four percent and fifty point three percent indicating mixed to negative sentiment on short-term economic growth for the nation and region. Nearly half of the supply of managers surveyed expected a twenty twenty-four recession and only a fifth expected a national income expansion. The latest data for the South Dakota's labor force pegged, uh, at above, uh, four hundred and eighty-five thousand. More than ten thousand three hundred people were added in the, in the past year alone. These, uh, labor force gains translate, uh, to a year-over-year growth of two point two percent, which outpaces our neighboring states, Iowa and Nebraska saw declines in labor force. A two point percent of South Dakota's unemployment rate remain significantly low and is currently the third lowest among all the states. Getting close to the end. Eighty-seven hundred plus have filed, uh, out an interest form, uh, for Dakota Roots we- website and this is, uh, with the program that South Dakota has, uh, called Freedom Works Here and they put it out, twenty-two hundred of those are working with the Department of Labor and Regulations to find job opportunities in South Dakota. There's, there's a few other things, but I think that mostly covered it, I think we're doing pretty damn good as a state.
Nice to hear some good news sometimes, Don.
People need to step back and, and think about some of those good things that go on. Are we still in?
You still got the floor if you need it.
Okay, when we took our county assignments, uh, back, uh, in January, uh, I ended up, uh, with, uh, two of them that I think, uh, need to have some attention. Uh, one was strategic planning committee and, and I would like to, uh, work to disagree to, uh, organize a date when, when they could meet with us and we could do strategic planning. And, uh, the other one, uh, basically, uh, involved county planning and, and Gary and I are working on that. So, is, is that all right on the strategic planning?
Certainly.
Good idea.
Certainly.
And we're gonna keep going on JD AI too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don, it's always, uh, refreshing to hear your, uh, wise comments.
Why, thank you.
Dan, you got anything to update us on?
I don't have anything tonight, nothing, no.
Uh, I have nothing other than I've been kind of trying to keep up on between work and everything else, trying to keep up on what's happening out in Pier at the legislative session and, uh, again, uh, I don't see a lot of, uh, refreshing stuff coming out of there to, to assist us, although there are a couple bills that are still on the table that may give us some assistance, so, um, that's all I've got. Uh, at this time, I would accept a motion, take a motion to.
I would move to go into executive session for poor relief and contracts.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don to move into executive session, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Yeah.
Make a motion to go back into regular session.
Got a motion by Dan?
Second.
Second by Ryan to come back into regular session?
I would make a motion to approve County Welfare Burial Number 24-1-001 in the amount of $1,250. I would, you want me to do them all at once or individually?
You can do them all.
Okay. And County Welfare Burial 24-1-02 in the amount of $1,250. And County Welfare 23-2-024 in the amount of $4,757.04. With the notation that the third recommendation to pay that citizen or constituent has agreed to reimburse the county by making monthly payments in the amount of $100 until the full amount of $4,757.04 is paid in full.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, motion by Wanda, second by Don. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Items for our next meeting.
Was there anything on contra?
I'm sorry?
Did you have a contract one?
There was nothing to present at the...
No action was taken on any contracts in executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn any discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Meeting is adjourned. Man, this took almost two hours tonight. We need to put, we need to put these plaits on...